Good evening, welcome to the Wilson Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, March 12, 2024. My name is Tim Carter, Superintendent Schools. As I usually mention, we will set aside a portion of our meeting for public comment. If you're in the audience, you certainly can participate. If you're not, you're welcome to call the district clerk, Mrs. Tava, 751-9399, and she'll make sure she gets the common question and concern to all the board members. At this time, I will turn the board meeting over to President Carroll.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. Please stand and join me in the flection of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 1, be approved in the meeting in the state of February 27, 2024. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 2, a resolvent Wilson Central School District Board of Education approved the following: Items B through D in the financial consent agenda as submitted by the administration. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 3A, Wilson Central School District Code of Content is being presented for a 30-day public comment period. The 2024-2025 Code of Content will also be posted at the district's web center review. Item 4A, view resolvent Board of Education of the Wilson Central School District hereby approving creation of an extracurricular club titled Middle School Debate Club effective March 13, 2024 with advisors stipend for the WPA contract. For any year that the advisor positions still and that such club is active, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 5, personnel resignations by day except the resignation of the therapist, assistant, food service helper, monitor, effective March 26, 2024. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, accept the resignation of Jonathan Benson from Brown Speaker Buildings effective April 26, 2024. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, accept the resignation of Diana Carles, stenographer, effective August 26, 2024 for retirement purposes. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 6A, appointments. A, approve of personnel appointments for the March 12, 2024 agenda. Items B through C. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 7A, approve the updated reserve plan for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, approve the memorandum agreement between Wilson Central School District and the Wilson Teachers Association to amend the language to allow for a requested increase when determined warranted in the percentage reimbursement for extracurricular and additional assignment sale for the duration of the collective bargaining agreement in effect from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2026. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Any, we got a second? Second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, approve resolution of the Wilson Central School District directed that Saturday, April 20, 2024, is the Wilson cleanup of the waterfront day. We encourage all Wilson CSD community members to participate in the Earth Day event. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, approve the creation of a 1.0 FTE 12.1 Special Education Teacher at the Elementary School for the WPA agreement. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, opposed? Motion carried. Item B, approve the creation of a 1.0 FTE Win Learning Center directive per the WPA agreement. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F, approve the creation of two 1.0 FTE teacher positions per the CSCE agreement. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item G, student teacher kind of grace from Niagara University will be student teaching in the middle school with James Alderman, social studies teacher retroactively from March 12, 2024 through May 1, 2024. Is Director President Clear with the New York State Education Department? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item H, approve Wilson Elementary School public here for the 2023-2024 school year, Heather Estruski. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have some policies. First reading or no action. 6411, use of email in the district. Policies 7350, timeout physical restraints. Policy 8020, safety conditions and professional instruction. Policy 8020, career and technical occupational education. Policy 8240, instruction in certain areas.
Thank you, President Carroll. The first one is policy 6411. Board members, you've had this in your news and notes for first read. This is a, I don't know if it's a brand new policy, but they pulled it away from the acceptable use policy and put some more guidelines in regards to the use of email in the district. For example, you know, staff members should not be using their district email as the primary email for opening accounts for shopping, for things like that. District emails should only be used for email purposes. You know, but there is no expectation of privacy when using district email. Accessing the district's email system on personal devices, personal use of the district email system. So as you're flipping through, you can see there's quite a bit of guidelines, some training that needs to be happening, notification. I think the biggest change, this is actually on the front page, is when sending emails with personal, private, or sensitive information in letter, let's see, I need to find that second page. It's C in the middle of the second page where it says that any files that are personal, private, or sensitive information have to be sent through encrypted and confidential way. So our email system, Gmail, has the ability for us to lock an email. So for example, if I'm sending staff information, student information to one of the principals, if you click on that lock system, it prevents anyone who's receiving it from printing it and sending it forward, therefore it stays private as a private email. This is a policy that is required by law. Any questions about policy 6411?
My, I have one question is, should board members, do they fall under this tier of order?
Yes. So once the policy is, well, yes, if you're using your district email. So once this policy is approved at the next board meeting, our tech department and the staffs will be sending out directions and how to go about doing that specific to private information. But yes, if that, if, if a board member is using their, per district email, that would, you would fall under this policy also. And that's just policy. 7350, timeout, physical restraints. So the district has for a long time had a corporal punishment policy. Corporal punishment policy is that under those circumstances should be used, physical force be used on a student for the purpose of this. Now, the old and new corporal punishment policy does say that if a student is harming themselves, harming another person, destroying property, the administrator or teacher has the right to intervene on that, on behalf of the other student, they have themselves of the property being destroyed. That hasn't changed. But they put a lot of laws in place for the use of physical restraint, timeout rooms, of which in Wilson, we currently do not have, we don't currently operate under physical restraints. There are, there's training that needs to happen to the staff. So this 10-page policy, only one page really pertains to our teachers. It's the, if they're, someone's hurting themselves, hurting another person, or if they are destroying property, then administrator or teacher can intervene. So for example, it protects if there's a fight going on in a school, a teacher, administrator can step in and stop the fight. The rest of this that has to do timeout, physical restraints, is more for a very selective behavior-focused school program. We're making all districts approve this. We don't use those, those kind of measures. If we did, we'd have to train our staff. It's more for an ONGO C program that has smaller class sizes than A1161. A class that has a lot of behavior concerns in the classroom, then they would be using these techniques. But we wanted to shrink this down, move back to the one page, but then, this is how he said, apparently look at it based on the camp, this law, we have to, we have to keep it the way it is. So like I said, most of that part of policy does not pertain to any other district other than what I thought. Any questions about it?
Can you just refresh me, get up the purple, the difference between the blue and the purple?
Hmm. Um, the purple would be, was left up to district discretion, so that would be language that Mrs. Constance put in per our lawyer's suggestion.
Okay. Thank you.
The blue is a policy service act based on the law.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I have a few more. I'm going over. Policy 8020, safety conditions prevention. This policy has been here for a very long time. 1999 is the first date that's on it. What you're seeing is the addition in blue and cross out of some of the laws that no longer pertaining to the back page, but you can see in blue, the instruction of child sexual exploitation and child sexual abuse. All district students K3, district where we see instruction designed to educate students, parents, teachers, all other full personnel of the prevention of child sexual exploitation, child sexual abuse. Instruction may be included as part of the district health education program. And it goes on, curriculum addresses, you can see the topics of D, B, and C. And the district is providing an instruction, okay, in the middle schools during health classes and then specifically in high schools, which we use North Point this year to drive that instruction.
My question is, it says all grades in K through A, what about 9th and 12th?
There's no law providing it, but all of our 9th graders do take help, or they have to take help in, in high school also, and it's provided, I should not remember here in a month. And I believe North Point also provides an instruction in middle school, high school health tests. Any other questions about that? And there's a meaningful law that, that I can get a roll near your attention, I'm gonna use it. There's a name for the law that put that in place. It has been enacted within the last couple of years. The next one on the docket is policy 8020, career and technical education. So basically, this one talks about if the district recognizes the need for career and technical education and reaffirms the policy strengthening the availability of career and technical education, obviously for our ONGO C program. There's just some changes to the language and the original authority, public notification and access. And if a child is denied, there's a grievance process for that also. So this is based upon changes to Title I laws, Section 504 laws that were changed, Equal Educational Opportunities Act that was changed. So on that, you can see all of the blue, the changes of different laws that created this basic change. For us, it's nothing different. We continue to provide a well-rounded career and technical education. Our students still go in their junior and senior year. This policy is just backing that up. Any questions about policy 8020? The last one is policy 8040, instruction in certain subjects. There were some editing changes throughout. There's that beginning paragraph that they basically talked about that the board has the authority to prescribe course studies in school districts. However, there are general curriculum areas and specific topics at which the board must prescribe instruction to, and all students in the district will receive instruction according with applicable law and regulations. So you can see all these ones are already in black, are already here. So that's, that's nothing new. The new is on the back page, excuse me, page two or three, in which they added in the provision that the district must provide instruction in sudden cardiac arrest. And I'll read that to you, you're perfect, you're certainly capable of doing that, I just wanted to make sure I, I kind of identified that. Obviously, that changes, is made in response to what happened around last, last year. You know, once this policy is approved, we'll work out how that's gonna happen. Board members, any questions about that policy, 8040? That's all I have.
Item B, policies for adoption. Item 9A, approve CPSC, CSE final report meeting minutes and IEP recommendations dated March 12, 2024. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 10, conference requests. Item 8, approve conference request per the March 12, 2024 agenda. Item B through C. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Superintendent Carter, do we have conference reports?
Thank you. The first one is a conference report for Lockport Family Focus Group, in which our associate worker, Worgen Taylor, went to, it's a family focus group meeting on Wednesday, February 21st. She attended the Greg Lewis sponsored family focus group meeting held at the YMCA in Niagara Frontier. Greg Lewis is the chairman of the foundation based in Eastern Niagara County and provides grant funding for nonprofit organizations with focus on youth, education, health, wellness, culture, and community improvement. The meeting was a standing room-only event with agencies throughout Niagara County representing, including YMCA, YWCA, Youth Mentoring Services, Cafeteries, Niagara Falls Memorial Center, Canyon Center, Oscars, Lockport School District, Lockport Cares, Salvation Army, local libraries in Niagara County, the Lockport Mayor, and then of course, Wilson Central School District. Megan Summerfield and Laura, don't, Laura DeGio, though, from the Community Foundation for Greater Buffalo and the Ten Year Old Speters, and gave those in attendance an overview of resources available to the Community Foundation, including investing strategies for nonprofits, grant opportunity to both Niagara Theory, Niagara Area Foundation, and Community Foundation, focused on education, diversity, equity, and inclusion in the environmental and arts and culture. Following their presentation, each meeting attendee was given an opportunity to introduce themselves and give an update on activities at their respective organizations. The meeting gave the opportunity to network around Niagara County as well as giving a fair, good, a good opportunity to invite meeting attendings to participate in the district's community resources. I also have a, a report from our, our football coach who attended in that 2024 New York State High School Football Association Football Clinic. Bill Adliss, high school physical education teacher, like the Department of Education for allowing Angela Tena, 2024 New York State High School Football Coaches Association Football Clinic, to connect, showing him a few new and innovative ways to teach sport of football, increase success. In addition, he gave little ideas that he can carry along with incorporating other international sports. He said, thank you, have a great weekend, Bill. Karen Mauer attended the Science Consortium, and that was on March 5, 2024. She said, thank you for your opportunity, along with for approving my conference request. She attended the Science Consortium at ONGO C, ONGO C on 3/4/24. This conference went over some of the new requirements for rollout of the New York State Science Learning Standards. She was given some resource to address the changing content in commensurate biology. More information should be released this spring and the next year that will help with curriculum development and will hopefully apprise us with the subsequent changes. The opportunity to network other local science teachers is extremely important as we share best practices for implementation of these changes. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. Under fundraiser request, 12A, approved fundraiser request for the March 12, 2024 agenda. Items B through C. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under item 13, use of facility request. Item 13A is approved, use of facility request for the March 12, 2024 agenda. Items B through C. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under item 14, field trips action required. Item 14A, approve field trip request for the March 12, 2024 agenda. Items B through C. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 15, there's some action required. Opposed? Mrs. Trustee Stewart, did you have any comments on it?
Just a reminder of a prospective board member. He's at the Saturday at Niagara for North Point, pardon.
Thank you, Trustee Stewart. Superintendent Carter, do you have a superintendent's report?
Yes, indeed, thank you, and welcome to our board meeting. I'll start with last week, Thursday, during the school day, we had the Up Guys here doing a presentation to our pre-K through grade hall students. The high school was open in the morning, elementary school in the afternoon, going down by grade levels. And I mean, overall, the response was extremely positive. They were entertaining, and they had their message of character education. Back evening, Thursday evening, was our family resource night and fair, in which ten or thirty, grade five students were entertained with a magician in the library, and the Up Guys entertained them. The Up Guys entertained their parents and gave their message in the upcoming year. We also had a spaghetti dinner for the families, followed by our community resource fair in my high school gym. To say that that night was a success is, is not giving it its justice. We had about 156 people sign up and a little over 130 people were eating, I was told, and that means, and I know there were some who paid that didn't end up staying for dinner, so I think we were close, about 130, and are probably closer than 140, which is bigger than last year. The vendors were extremely happy with the traffic that they had in the community resource fair. We're going to have to do some, we're going to have to do some fancy footwork for next year. The print that we've been using, which is the, our print, that'll bring the entertainment and things like that, isn't available anymore, so we'll have to continue to work on best practices, the group people, and maybe don't cost as much as, but are still earning. The magician was very expressive, and he was awesome, from what I was told, the kids enjoyed a lot, and sort of Mr. Lucky. So that was, last Thursday, Friday was a superintendent's conference day, and it kicked off at eight o'clock in the morning with young guys putting out our presentation, and it instantly got up, gave the message of importance and a positive mindset. And then the elementary school had their morning at the Sugar Grill, and they went through professional development in the afternoon. The high school middle school- The high school, middle school completed their professional development, some mental health and wellness stuff, wellness, some curriculum things, and then the afternoon they had an opportunity to work in their classroom. I want to just thank everybody who participated in both, all of the events and helped set up. It was quite a production. I've already personally thanked the people who really put it together, so I'm just saying thank you to everyone who's involved. Then Friday, Saturday night came, I got the opportunity to spend some time with our theatrical students in Almost Maine. I was extremely pleased with their student, with their performance. We have unbelievable talent in the district. And while I didn't quite understand everything in the, in the, in the play, the talent of our kids are just awesome. It was a busy weekend, because on Sunday, I was at the Sheridan in Niagara Falls, celebrating two of our students, one of whom is in a room right now, Jack Maher and Ryan Ferry. We're representing Wilson as our police athletic week salary athlete of the year. You'll see pictures in our, from the helm from that event, and also the Almost Maine. I want to remind board members that Wednesday, April 10th, is the OCS Annual Board Meeting. Just quick on the code of conduct, you heard a line saying that there's a public comment, so for the next 30 days, this code of conduct will be online as a draft. And if anybody has any questions, any changes from last year are highlighted, so if you have any questions, please call the 7519298 number, give a question, ask, give a comment, whatever you think you need to bring it back to the board. That comment period's for 30 days, so 30 days from today, that will be an action item that will be approved for next year. And finally. I'm done. I got all seven items. Thank you. Any questions, board members?
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. The only thing I really have is right before the meeting started, I guess we got ordered of the legislative budget that was submitted, and many of the cuts were reinstated. I don't know if Trustee Seager wants to make a couple of comments, because he's the one that brought the information forward to us.
Thank, thank you, President Carroll. Briefly, I'm still absorbing the entirety of the information, but as of last night, the whole house and all of you released their project drafts, and it does appear that they have, they intend at least to reverse any of the, you know, most of the cuts that were indicated in the executive project. Most importantly, for our purposes, the two issues that I mentioned after my, this is all meeting with our legislators, the two base ones that we're going to hurt us were the modification in the inflation calculation, which was under, underestimating the amount of inflation and affecting our budgetary items. And more importantly, the changes in the foundation age formula, including the elimination of the state harmless provision, both of which were going to have a big effect on our budget going forward. As of now, the two legislative drafts go out in the Senate and the Assembly put all the act. So it appears that there will be some negotiating between the government and legislature, but at the very least, I think this, this really makes clear that the advocacy CEO, you know, our, our small district and many others like the Ross County State, big and small, clearly had an influence here with the legislators to be in this level of lockstep about this and just pushing back on what the governor and opposed indicates that, that indicates that they are getting a lot of noise from their constituents, including us. So I, I think this is a good sign looking forward. At the very least, it's an indication that our representatives will be able to, which will be bringing these things up to them. So it'll be interesting to see what happens next. That's everything I have right now.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Trustee Seager, and I'm just saying, thank you for all your hard work, even on the cutting edge of this, and you've been working hard with our elected officials. You know, I appreciate you taking the time out on all the evening with our legislators. The fight's not over yet, I think it's still on the horizon, so again, please reach out to your elected officials, the governor's office, and let them know that, you know, custom of public education is not acceptable in this, in this time.
If I could give one more comment, President Carroll, and I just want to second what you just said. If there was one thing that I think we all heard from our legislators and elected officials when we brought these things up, it's how important we are from the community larges. So to anybody listening out there who, you know, feels strongly about this as, as we all do, do reach out to, to our elected officials, it does make a difference.
On a separate note, I mentioned a wonderful calendar of our students. I did mention that tomorrow night, 7:00, here at the auditorium, is an online Broadway presentation. Third, this will be, I think, the third one I've been to, and it's just actually outstanding, so I suggest you come by. And then on Thursday, the elementary schools have a little park night. So please, if you, if you want to spend some time enjoying the parents' and reading program, the park night is Thursday at the elementary school.
6:30?
6:30.
That'll be a vote, yes, gentlemen.
And a vote in the general.
Board members, anybody need anything to bring to the order? You're none? Now it's time for public forum. If you have anything you'd like to address the board, please step forward, state your name and address. Keep your comments brief and respectful and limited to the information that we discuss. Okay, I don't believe there's a need for an executive session tonight. Can I have a motion, Bojern?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Can I have a?